All right, folks, we will go ahead and call our council meeting to order. It is 7:05 PM. And if we can start with the moment of silence, I would like this to be in honor of Gordy Chapman, who was a police officer with Albion Department of Public Safety for 25 years, who has recently passed. If we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Just as a reminder, if you happen to have a cellphone on, please make sure that it's on silent or turned off. City Clerk Miguel Gil take role conference, please.
That's a member of ours.
Seven.
Reed, here, Jackson.
Here.
Waller.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
And his name.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda with the adjustment of moving item O under item, what here?
E.
Out of item E, yes.
Some of. Support.
Policy would say I.
I.
opposed. All right, nice. So we will start this evening with a few presentations. Next, first off, and our audit by our team from Manor Costerison. All right. After a few years, I get it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so thank you for the introduction. My name is Scott Baker. I'm a senior manager at Manor Costerison. Um, and what will be going over mainly today is this power win. There should have been on the top of those documents. Um, what this is, is a, um, a re-urgitation and presentation of items that are in the whole report. But for ease of working through and, uh, in time purposes, um, put in the presentation here, um, as we go through. But if you have any questions, we can dive into the actual bottom report as well. Um, if you have any questions during it, raise your hand at any point to gladly, um, answer any of those questions that you may have. Um, this audit was added up to all 31 of 23 fiscal year. Um, through the process, um, David's meeting were available to us, um, always receptive. Um, and any kind of our questions that we had, so that's greatly appreciated, uh, from the audit side, because we know, um, every 20 years, jobs don't stop and we go on without having to button it. So, um, that's greatly appreciated on our side. So further ado, um, so we'll get started with this presentation. Um, we'll go over the auditors report. Uh, we'll talk about some statements that position, perhaps nope of information. Uh, and then we'll touch on general fund as well as some additional graphs and trends, uh, in regard, in regards to, uh, to the general fund. So the audit report, um, these three pages, uh, again, these are just summarized from the three pages within the bottom report are the only three pages that are that of the auditors. Um, the rest of it are that of the cities. Um, overall, the audit objective, um, for this audit is, uh, for the purpose of, uh, to express an opinion on the financial statements. Uh, the purpose is not to detect fraud or express an opinion on the internal controls over the city, but to place an opinion. Um, in, in our opinion, this year, consistent with previous years, um, is an unmodified, uh, or clean opinion, um, which states that the financial statements are, um, free of material misstatements. Um, and we provide that reasonable assurance on it, which is the highest level that all sense auditors can provide on set of financial statements. It also goes through and discusses responsibilities of management for the financial statements, uh, preparation of the inferior presentation of the financial statements, uh, the design and implementation of the internal controls, as well as fraud detection, deterrence, prevention. And again, auditors' responsibilities to express an opinion on those financial statements. As we get into the financial statements here, it's a little bit, uh, it's a little bit smaller there, um, on the screen, the whole three. So we can see there on their piece of paper. Um, so this is the statement that position. So this is citywide, um, as of point in time. So as of 12/31/23, and this includes items of long-term nature, including debt, fixed assets, pension, and then the other post-employment benefits as well. Uh, we'll draw your attention to that total assets line item. Um, third column from the left, the total highlighted is 40, just under $47 million, um, dollars as of 12/31/23. Prior year was 42.2, so that's an increase of 4.7 from year over year. Majority of that increase is an increase in net pension asset, which we will touch base on the public safety pension plan here in a minute, as well as an increase in capital assets, um, that were put in service or occurred during the course of the year. Total liabilities, two-thirds of the way down, is just over $5 million, uh, which is up to $3 million from the prior year. Um, so that increase in two is mainly due to revenue bonds that were, uh, drawn on during 2023, uh, as well as an increase in net pension liability of 1.8 million. So I mentioned the, the asset went up in one and the liability went up in the other purely due to timing of the year ends of those plans, which we'll go over here in a second, just to draw some light on that. Next page is a, uh, is a, well, we'll be a 10-year, but certainly a 9-year trend of the pension plan, the non-public safety pension plan. So we present here a part of the reverse plan and statewide plan. That is a year behind just due to timing of the actuarial evaluation coming out. So you'll see that 2022 column on the far left highlighted is as of 12/31, which is the most recent at the time of the audit available. Total pension liability, um, for the city as a part of that plan was 14.7 million, with plan fiduciary net assets of 11.6, which comes to that, that pension liability for the non-public safety pension plan of just over $3 million, which is up from $1 million net pension liability the year prior. Um, halfway up, you can see the changes in plans that, uh, position. There's a net investment income and loss. We think of what the market looked like at 12/31 of '22. It was down overall for that plan, which is, which caused that net pension, um, liability to increase by about 1.547 million dollars. Plan net position as a percentage of liability is just under 80% or 79%, uh, which again is still sitting well, but that slight decrease from the prior year, which you'll see fluctuations in that, uh, investment gain and loss from year to year. Overall, from first, um, very consistent with both things possible throughout the first. The next page is the trend of the public safety pension plan. The left column, you can see because of the single employer plan, that, uh, that valuation the city does on its own and can get, uh, timely for the audit. So that is as of year end. Um, and up to date as of 2023, uh, at the bottom, you can see that city net, was a net pension assets of 9.3 million, meaning that there is $9.3 million city in net possession, uh, net position higher than what that actuarial, uh, determined liability. So obviously sitting in various top of mass standpoint regarding to the public safety pension plan. The last trend here, um, is the old plan or the other total plan, um, welfare plan, uh, again, single, uh, employer plan. So we have active, uh, up-to-date information as of 2023. Total liability was estimated based on the actuarial valuation at 148,000, with assets of 35,000, causing there to be a net liability of approximately 113,000, um, which is down from 143,000 the prior year, or funding percentage of 20. But then you can see over the time of that year, that's continued to go up. Questions on pension or old debt currently for Egon? Um, the next page is the general fund budget actual. Um, so what this is, is the main operating fund of the city. So you have the four column, the original budget, the final group budget, actual expenditures, and then the variance of the final budget on that far right column. But draw your attention to total revenues at the bottom. Anticipated revenues were just under 5.6 million, actual 5.365 million, or revenues under final budget of 214,000 at year end. Middle of the page, you can see under the intergovernmental, the federal slash state revenue, anticipated of 1.9, actual 1.7 million. Um, is the majority of what that, uh, that's under final budget is. Um, that is mainly due to budgeting for full grants being expended during that busy week. Um, and if projects can be completed, timing of the contracts, things like that, sometimes others does. Um, they grant year to carry over into the next six years. So that's the majority of that difference, uh, for 2023. The next page is the expenditures. Um, again, still with the general fund. Um, middle of the page, you can see total expenditures, uh, budgeted final of just under 5.4 million. Actual was 5.34 million for a positive, um, variance of under, uh, actual expenditures on a final budget of, um, 59,000, which is across, no label 1%, positive variances, uh, which is, which is right where you'd love to be on the stamp on the question for expenditures. Next page is the balance sheet. For the general fund, the main operating fund of the city, um, total assets at, uh, at of year end, again, as of point in time, as of 12/31 was 2.6 million. In the current year, prior year was 3 million. Um, majority of that is just decreased cash flow as of, as of year end, um, from the prior year to the current year. Total liabilities also decreased proportionately from 1.1 in the prior year to 652,000, so decreased liabilities, decrease in that cash. Which also are that decreasing liabilities and revenue, um, which was a little over 700,000. Um, and that's mainly due to recognizing of the our funds. Fund balance at the bottom there, total fund balance of 1.945 million, um, which is approximately 36% of, of total revenues and expenditures, which is consistent with where you were, um, in the prior year as well. And you can see that on the next page with the income statement. Or the statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance for the general fund, total revenues, um, 5.365. And the current year, as we noted before, prior year is 5.5 million. So overall, consistent approximately a 2% change from year over year, uh, mainly due to timing of, um, one-time grants in the prior year and that recognition. The total expenditures, 5.34 in the current year, prior year was 5.4, so very consistent overall from expenditures. Um, which at the bottom, you can see that net change in fund balance of a decrease of 19,000, um, with, with a, a total fund balance of 1.9, very consistent from year over year, um, in regards to the general fund. You can see that in the next page, which is the five-year trend in regards to the general fund. So, um, the, we'll call that blue column, um, is the revenues and other financial sources. The green is the expenditures, and then the orange line is the fund balance. Over the last five years, you see the slope, um, steady increase in both respective revenue and expenses over the year. Um, you can see that update in the prior year mainly due to just large one-time, um, recognition of those revenues and expenses. But as a trend, you can see that steady, um, increase in expenditures in line with, with the revenues, um, which is what you like to see in this graph. Um, you do not like generally see large roller coasters up now, um, which is good. The next two pages again are, um, five-year trends, um, and kind of where the money comes from, from year to year for the city in regards to the general fund. Going from left to right, um, 2019 to 2023, um, the three largest areas are property taxes, which is the, the bottom part of that bar graph, that approximately 23% income taxes, the next berry column at 26%, and then the intergovernmental is that light blue section at 33%. So overall, you can see again that steady increase and see, um, that the revenue for the city is largely derived approximately 49% from that property tax and income tax revenue. Excuse me. Next page, expenditures. Same idea here, uh, left to right from 2019 to 2023. Uh, the two largest expenditure being public safety, which is that middle berry section, approximately 46% of the total expenditures in the general fund, and then general government being, uh, 26% of that, uh, blue section at the bottom. Overall percentages consistent, um, from year to year for the city, but you can see that slight increase as we saw on the revenues and install in the, uh, the previous graph as well for the city. What we have, we don't always have, um, every year for the city, and this is our schedule of findings and questions caused. So this year, we had those called a single audit, um, which is a separate compliance audit that we are required to perform on the city expense or as expenditure subject to uniform guidance for federal expenditures over 750,000, which the city had this year. What this, uh, schedule shows is it goes through the kind of a report card, if you will, of financial statement findings that there may be at the top there. Um, and if there was any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or non-compliance, uh, we would state it in here. And as you can see, all of those Xs are in the no column. The section below is the federal awards. So as we do our major program testing, um, as part of the single audit, we had findings in regards to the federal awards. We would note that here, as you can see, those are in the no column as well. And then if we had any other, um, findings, um, subjects to the, uh, federal award or non-compliance, it would be in that bottom one, which you can see as no with an unmodified opinion. Those two, uh, grants below, you were, uh, because of, um, coverage percentages, we had to test two programs this year for the city, um, one of which being the waste and water disposal system, um, grants, and then the community development white grant that you can notes, um, there. And then at the bottom, section two and section three, financial statement findings and federal award findings, they're for. Any other questions on the presentation currently before I do the last little, uh, letter that has been touched inside the, the large, um, boards?
Any questions so far?
Inside the bottom or right inside that first flat, it should be a lot, I kind of thought it in there, so it doesn't give. So what this is, is, uh, what's referred to as our governance letter. Um, so this is required communication to the board in here. It discusses estimates, um, as you can see in the bottom side of that, as discussed, the pension liability. Um, it, uh, useful lies of fixed assets, there is inherently, um, estimates within the financial statements. This disposes that to, um, governance. Um, if there was any difficulties encountered during the audit or any uncorrected misstatements, um, going off page two, or any disagreements with management, it would be required to be disclosed in this letter. I will let you read this at leisure tonight, but this is a board of play letter. Uh, we didn't have any disagreements with management. Um, and, um, uh, no uncorrected statements later or anything like that. Everything you requested be received from the city. So that's a, it's a clean board of play letter that's still required to be communicated, um, to governance each year.
Do we have any questions for Kyler in regards to this information?
Thank you.
As regards to the margin of the main healthy budget, is that the consensus from all the information based on expenses and then with an emergent of.
Right, see where we are at.
So for overall, there is, there was no concern.
So the, at the very bottom of the, um, the actual page for the general fund, kind of, which will, uh, five or six of the, of the document there, um, anticipated any fund balance, um, budgeted was 2.1 million, actual came under that of 155,000, which ideally you'd like to see a slight increase, but again, because of what we referenced before, and that's still within 2.8%, which is, which is well within the realm of public general policy in regards to that. Some of that is out of, um, somewhat out of control.
Any other questions? Right. Thank you for our, uh, late night reading.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, um, Tom Welch and Ashlyn Reed from the college. Who will be here to move event on an upcoming community event.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. We are coming from the Center for Sustainability in the Environment at Albany College. Um, as we said, I'm Tom Welch. Walking around room is Ashlyn Reed, who is the sustainability coordinator for CSC and director of CSC. And we have two of our summer interns, uh, Nico in defense and Bonnie. For nervous mode there, sorry again. Um, so for many years, the college, uh, has had a city service day at the beginning of the school year. Um, they went away during COVID, and last year we established the city service days and we, and they were organized by our summer, uh, merit board interns, sustainability interns working in the community. So, um, uh, we're coming to you today for, to get a little, to alert you about the event and get some, uh, feedback from you. Hopefully inviting you to share some ideas with us. Um, just to give you a little background, last year we did a number of projects around the city, including at the community garden, weeding in downtown Albion, and that the citizens beautified Albion gardens, uh, painting and stow for plaza, and at the victory park playground, and cleanup along some city streets, along the trail system, and also in Holland Park. Uh, last year we had over 80, uh, participants in the event. Mostly they were college students, but we also included some community members. Um, this year's event is a month, uh, is in a month, on Saturday, September 7th. Uh, the, the event will run from 9 to noon, um, with about two hours of work time. Uh, with the festival, or coming two weeks after the event, we think it's a good time to sort of concentrate on some downtown projects, but we're really interested in getting projects from all around the city. Um, we would love to get ideas from you about projects. We would like to have, or we're open to having both indoor and outdoor projects, although most of them will probably be outdoors. We passed around, Ashlyn passed around some flyers for you today. Um, they have both Ashlyn's and my email address on them, and we would love to have her share ideas with us right now or through me. So thank you very much, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for any of the individuals before I?
That's nice. Thank you. Uh, glad to see you all here. Welcome. Um, is there a deadline for receiving feedback?
Not really. We've, we've also reached out to, uh, Elmer Garrett and the city, and we're sort of looking around at other folks too, but no. We'll take it as soon as we can. Basically, we have to look at the, the projects in front of us. We avoid projects that involve ladders or power tools, um, but we are, we do have a lot of hands and we can do a fair amount of work in a short period of time. So we welcome them whenever we can get them, but probably at least a weekend, I hope you use for.
All right, thank you.
So I think if we have any projects within our precincts that you can think of, um, that may need like tools, we want to make sure that the city is aware so that it's not an, an expense for the college, so that whoever's working on these projects has the tools necessary to complete the project. So if rakes are needed, or bags are needed, or paint is needed, we definitely want to make sure we're letting them know and the city know while in advance, so we can provide those type of tools, so that the projects can be completed. Because like, uh, Professor Welch said, that it's a short period of time that will, they have to get the projects done, but we wanted to make sure that the time can be best utilized.
Yeah, we, we got a lot done last year. I mean, in two hours with 20 people standing the, uh, fence around the victory park, or in the, I mean, the victory park playground, a lot done. So even though it's short, a lot of people, a lot.
Right.
Question.
Uh, are you willing to, um, maybe collaborate with some other organizations in town, but maybe, okay.
Yeah, we're looking for, yeah, we're looking for collaborators and co-sponsors and, yeah, so.
All right.
If you.
I will get back and contact with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you essentially collaborated with Citizens Computer Biologist last year, um, but we're open to other.
I'm thinking, uh, royalty.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll definitely pass on ideas your way. All right, and lastly, we have Mary Slater, who is here to introduce a special guest. We've had in town for a while.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here representing Sister City, and in particular, our intern that's here from our sister city, Boising along. This is Bonnall, Dan Wade. If you want to tell them.
That's me too. I'm an internship at the Chamber of Commerce of Auburn. Uh, so I'm in the, uh, the cell phone and also serving, uh, social media. Uh, to, to those, uh, every historical, uh, and also need to be, uh, finished on time.
And how long have you been in town with us?
Uh, it's been two weeks, and I'm two weeks there.
Okay, awesome.
Well, wow. Now we understand the lengths to which a Parisian would leave Paris for the Olympic Games.
Yeah, it's hard. It's for the competition. And glad to be here, and, uh, I was also diverse.
Yeah. Very good.
Excellent. And one, a couple of comments about the uniqueness of our Sister City relationship, which is still better than any place else in the country. And just to say, this brother was here doing an internship five years ago before COVID. And we just, as you know, had a, a new trip that went to France, and one of the youth stayed with his family, and now he's staying with that family here. And the connections that we have are just so rewarding, and just want everybody to be thinking about that.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome out.
All right. Public comments, if there's any. I'm sorry.
Right. Uh, Calvin County Senior Services. Wasn't that on? Uh-uh. No, am I looking at the one right here?
You on the new one?
Oh, oh, it looks like one got missed.
Yeah, it resonated with the, um, with the letters. Right directly under presentations. Yeah.
Okay, so right. I'm glad you got that.
Appreciate that. That's you, and we're reporting here.
Great.
Thank you.
There, and the council members, it's a privilege to speak with you tonight and share a repubgage in terms of the work that's going on for this year and what we did last year through the Albert Johnson Services, which of course is seeing a little bit of talent. And, uh, when I do these types of short, uh, brief talks, I like to do it within the context of how the circle of adults can be made of an ancient place. And to support them, to be able to live where they want to be, and the title service, the fund are directly with that. And so the report, you will see, uh, covers things like minor home care, transportation, who, things that we love that are basic to supporting equality like the older adults as the ancient place. And, uh, so in addition to the general funding, there will be. And so in addition to the general funding that we provided every year for these types of services to keep older adults in the homes, we also had the opportunity to partner with a number of Albean programs and organizations to support Albean older adult residents as well. And so some of the grants that we funded in the last year, one that I am part of and excited about, tech set of seniors and really providing an opportunity to both at home and at sports senior centers to be able to support older adults, not just access to technology, but also have students from other colleges work with them to be able to navigate what we often know to be very challenging space. But we know there's a benefit there and so for that. Additionally, though, we funded a number of programs focused on food insecurity, housing, et cetera. And we're very happy to be continuing to partner with Albean in terms of those things. Additionally, we also know that older adults benefit by social activities. So efficiently supporting the senior center, we also continue to support the swimming that's shown and walk the beach and different things we know older adults go to if I need in terms of community based types of activities. Also, just want to highlight two or three things that have been done. One of which is we're also fairly able to program through the city services called senior ambassadors. And we're privileged to have a number of our senior ambassadors, not put out the name. And again, they do a very important work in terms of being able to support older adults in the community and making sure they know about information and the roll touches services that are available to them as they need those type of services. So senior ambassador program, we created to support all older adults in the community, but we're clearly have a number of them actually different Albean and provide support in that way. And finally, just in terms of the importance of the ongoing support for working together and engaging with our partners or the length of that. Again, ongoing communications support with leadership here and making sure that we're understanding what is important to our residents, older residents in addressing these things that we talked about as far as things that to the basic things that older adults need to stay at home and safely. So I will exactly answer the question if you have any in terms of Calhoun County Services and what we're.
Any questions for Rob while he's here with us? Thanks for getting up.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alright, now on the public. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address counsel in regards to an agenda item, you may do so at this time in three minutes. It's yours.
Hello, my name is Chris Tolan. I'm here to, sorry, four on nine was Ash. I'm here to express my concern with the sidewalk and the movement of dogs in our neighborhood. These issues have significantly impacted the safety and enjoyment of our community and I hope the city can assist in addressing these issues. The sidewalk maintenance, the care of sidewalks in our neighborhood has declined over the years resulting in several jumping hazards, overgrowth of grass has made walking down a sidewalk a challenge and broken grass glass is frequently found posing a significant risk to residents and their pets. As a dog owner, I am particularly concerned about the impact of broken glass on my dog's feet. In some areas, it's so prevalent that I had to pick up my dog to prevent any injury. There is also concern regarding dogs that are not properly leashed or confined to their owners' property. Some homeowners leave their dogs, lease unfortunate alarm networks access sidewalks and. This has led to aggression behavior from some of the dogs who bark and charge at hazardous, creating and threatening environment. Interestingly, there are instances where dogs got hit on sidewalks where they're contributing to the unsanitary condition. Recently, we encountered a particular alarming incident where a dog was able to get free and run after our dog while we were on a walk. My husband picked up our dog just in enough time. But the charging dog managed to reach and injure our dog's foot. We had to educate our dog to the better of helping him over a four hundred dollar budget. I have also been approached by several homeowners to not walk my dog in front of their property because it's upsetting to their dogs. That's on your classic console does more and importantly, informing residents, sidewalks are public places and do more when it gives off under control. I believe that addressing this issue will greatly enhance the safety and quality of life in our neighborhood. I appreciate your attention to these matters and I look forward to seeing a positive change in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Scott, area two four one seven seven, Dr. South, Calhoun, Michigan. I'm going to just hit on a few points that the previous time I didn't allow. When the ordinance that you're going to be looking at is the first reading before approval. You're saying that there is, you know, this idea that you're going to contact social services. There isn't an outline of what that looks like. Now, whether that is, you know, part of an ordinance or a part of a policy or procedure. I encourage not only the board, the council members here to look at what that means because those are a lot of following words, you know, generally in unhoused situations of not too much of anything. So if you're going to contact social services, is that the idea that you're, you know, going to contact someone at Summit Point about it or you can collaborate with them or you're going to contact the sheriff's center and understand what a drawing center does for the unhoused in the cities they're in. Are you, you know, you have the, as the executive of city, county government, the mayor and their subordinates, it's there, it is incumbent upon them to research not only the implication of a ordinance, it is also of all the attendant problems that go with that or solutions, right? So this ordinance is again, an enforcement mechanism. It isn't a solution mechanism. It is very much to again, designed to make sure that the people that live in our community, Europe, you know, this community of Albean. That we're, we're disenfranchising people. We aren't working with people and that goes counter to, you know, to general human philosophy, you know, the moral imperative to Christian philosophy, to, you know, to Hebrew religion, Hebrew religion. To the Quran as well. Our goal as a society and as a people is to help live people when they can't do it themselves. This does nothing bad. We are incumbent to, we are called to serve people who can't help themselves. That doesn't mean you continue to serve them going forward. It does mean that you offer a handoff. And a handoff doesn't like this. So I encourage you to take another look at this ordinance and look at what can be done in conjunction with that. As far as how are you going to help people, not just try to keep moving them on. Thank you.
Do they also like to stand in a nurse council in regards to each other?
Right, in the movement? Do I have a motion to approve of the consent of counter items?
So move.
Support. Call of Davis, AI. Opposed?
Next, we do I have a motion to promote a counter offer to purchase three.
So move.
Support.
So the resident interested in purchasing the property made a counter offer, basically the same offer with some additional information added to that.
Attorney Harkness?
So I mean, I don't really think we can call it a counter offer because it hasn't changed. The number is the same. From the city's perspective, what I would suggest the council is, I don't think it's a good idea to, you know, the proposed buyer put out one number, the city came back with another. I don't think it behooves the city to reduce a number without some sort of movement from the other side. Otherwise, the city's negotiating with itself. You're effectively negotiating against yourself by not receiving a legitimate counter offer from the other side.
So there was no increase in the request of a sale price. It was just additional information. Any other questions on this item?
That's the number Williams.
No.
Reed? No. Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
France?
Yes.
And there's.
No. And motion to approve of the legal services agreement for the water systems improvement project.
So move.
Attorney Harkness?
So this is a form required by USDA as part of the project. As the city attorney, they require basically their own separate agreement indicating that I'm representing the city as part of the water improvement project. They require me to break down what our hourly rate is. There's no additional charge to the city because it's all falls under our existing contract. This is just a contract that USDA requires as part of their process. We did the same thing for the sewer project, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Harkness?
That's the number Reed.
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
France?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the first meeting of ordinance twenty twenty four oh four in regards to public camping?
So move.
Support. Attorney Harkness?
So as we discussed during the work session, this is an ordinance that is modeled directly after an ordinance from a community on the west side of the country, city of Grants Pass. The constitutionality of it was recently upheld by the US Supreme Court. Basically, it prohibits public camping, which is defined as sleeping in a place where you're not permitted to sleep, like in a park or something like that, blocking doorways, blocking driveways, blocking sidewalks, blocking streets with property and things of that nature. The ordinance has a notice requirement where they give twenty four hours in advance before taking enforcement. They connect the individuals with social services. After that point, if the individuals don't comply, there is a potential penalty, a misdemeanor penalty. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Harkness?
There for Tim Jackson? I'm sorry, wouldn't retain to Harkness, but thank you. So and I'm sorry. I guess my concern, I did have some of the concern here. The gentleman did speak up as well. My concern is this is true that we move them on to different places. You say you do have, where you guys do take them to from city to city if it's need. And it was one more concern as well. You know, I thought. Not just to move them outside the city, but they're just taking them to. Well, yeah. No, I'm sorry. I forgot that everybody wasn't in, was not in our first session. So thank you so much, Mayor. But yes, that we're taking them to a different facility. And the other concern is a lot of them to be, I mean, any, any of these individuals being fined. I mean, we see them walking up and down the street daily. I'm just really concerned about the word tense. We really haven't had anybody make a tent. We're just trying to make sure that's the word.
Oh, we're.
Using. Because I know we haven't had that report. Many, so have been many individuals. Just a few. I just want to be cautious as well.
And most of these people are very cooperative with us. We don't have issues with them. Every situation is different. Some people want help. Some people don't want help. We try to provide them whatever services we can provide them at the time. Sometimes there's no rooms for them available. We've worked with the sheriff's department to find out the places that they could actually camp if that was the case. So there are options. It's just, we don't have a lot of resources here in our community. Not as much as about a breach comment here, or Jackson, but we have transported people to wherever we could find a place for them to go if necessary.
Thank you. And that's one thing that disturbs me about us. We don't have resources for those people. And a lot of them do not want to leave Albean, but what do you do? Something's got to be done. I've worked with people that were homeless. And, and, and you know, you do everything you can for them. But it comes to a point to where if they don't have a place to live, they're going to keep going back to where they usually went. And most of the time it was the parks. They would be in the parks and when you, you, you would get them food and stuff like that and even clothes. But still, because they didn't have a place to live, they were going back to the parks. What, what do you do then?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. I kind of want to just get like a temperature check in the room of our willingness to have further discussion around homelessness and really resolving this problem going forward. Maybe establishing those certain partnerships that would be beneficial, especially with the winter being a few months away. Maybe we should be responsible in this moment and have further discussion so that we can actually come up with with a plan for helping assist people that we find to be homeless in our community to help them find shelter going forward. You know, maybe we don't solve the long term problem of homelessness, but maybe we are able to address the problem of people sleeping on the streets with maintaining our maintaining our public and our community while also helping those people who have fallen upon hard times.
Officer Manderes? Yes, it seems like the partnerships have been established, but they are not known to the public. So maybe if we can form an ad hoc committee or something to put it in writing. So there are some specific guidelines in terms of what you fault, because I've heard you say it before, we just don't dump them out in the street. We can take them to Summit Point. We can take them to, you know, maybe safe place. We can take them. So there are partnerships that have been formed, but we don't know, we don't know about.
And to your point, um, if we don't know about them, it's hard for us to direct people.
That's true.
Yes.
That's true.
Outside of Neighborhoods Inc., I haven't had much conversation about anything relating to homelessness or housing the unhoused with really anyone else that I can recall right offhand. With that being said, we do know and understand that there's a problem. People sit sleeping in their cars in the parks. People sleeping in the doorways. So I think that we have a, at least a decent template here of what the overall outcome should be is, you know, not having people sleep in the parks, not having people sleep in our downtown spaces or any other vacant spaces that, you know, may be private property that, you know, people may find themselves in. But I think this could be a catalyst for us to do something good here in the community where it could create that bridge for those people to get the help that they need.
So I, and I can't remember how many years ago it was. I think we had somebody come in and present about resources available through Calhoun County. There were like a voucher system, like if we had somebody, they could get a voucher to stay in a hotel. I don't remember what agency that was.
I think that was Neighborhoods Inc.
I think. But I think like, but like Congressman Davis was saying, those type of collaborations are already in place. We just need to be able to share that and push it out and make sure people are aware. And I also know that there's other nonprofits that have been having continual conversations about this, like how could the city of. How can the city of Alvin? Do more? To provide resources, so this is a brand new, we've been dealing with this for as long as I've been on council. Um there have been meetings, there have been discussions, there have been resources made available. But this is something that I think we need to do in order to, you know, kind of. Push that needle to the next step and offering a way, okay, so. We've identified now this is the next step, and I think this is a good way to take that next step. Um and to be able to give that resource to the individual. Attorney Harkness?
I I think everything that council has said is 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 great, I think there's a lot of different ways that council can. Work on addressing. Problems with homelessness, whether they're homeless because of mental health issues or. Or other issues, there's a lot of things I think the city can do. And and approving this ordinance that will not preclude any of that, those are all things that council can still work towards, the only question. With this ordinance is if if. We run it, if the city runs into a situation where. You have people, you know, camped out in a public park where they shouldn't be camping or blocking a business entrance on Superior Street or camped out on the sidewalk on Superior Street or whatever. Do you want to give public safety the ability after them giving notice and giving, you know, trying to connect them with services, the ability to remove them. From that area. Won't preclude the city from, you know, offering additional services or pointing them in the right direction, but. This is just about whether or not you want to, you know, give public safety that additional tool if they're gonna need.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So in removing them from the area, that would be like taking them to. A homeless shelter somewhere around.
If they wanted to go.
If they want to, yeah, you know, it there's a lot of different ways it could play out, if they could approach somebody and give them a notice and say, hey, you know, you can't camp here. It's a violation of city ordinance, you need to please move, and if they move, great, situation done. If they don't move, they have twenty four hours to move, if they come back and say, well, hey, can you give me a ride to a shelter? I don't think there's a single person in Scott's department that wouldn't say absolutely, we'll give you a ride. If they're just one of those individuals that is completely stubborn says, nope, I'm saying right here, I like my spot on Superior Street, I'm gonna stay. Then they can be removed.
What the necessary supports may be removed to go to Summit Point, to be removed to go to a family member's house, but. You know, you have to leave.
I think Scott will be the first one to agree, there's a lot of different individuals in the city of Alvin, and some are more willing to accept help than others. Like I said, there are some people that are on the streets because they have mental health issues, there are some people on the streets because they have controlled substance or alcohol issues and. Sometimes people with those issues don't. Have the greatest train of logic and sometimes just refuse help.
And and we deal with these complaints on a regular basis and to this day, I have yet to have anybody not comply with our requests. Wow, but that's not to say that they necessarily would.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I just think it's really necessary that we do something with, just like you said, with winter coming, I dealt with that last year with young men. And with winter coming, you know, actually paying for hotel space because it was just so leisurely cold out there until, you know. You you see him walking the street doing like this. Wrapped in a in a blanket. And and that is really. Ridiculous.
Now, I know there are several churches that will also provide financial assistance to get some somebody hotel space. Um you know, I can speak personally from St. John's, we've had several people. Like from the police department coming saying they need help. And the church has given them money to. Housing or not housing, but you know, overdose that. I think there's other churches in the community that provide that as well, um.
But again. Ramona Trust, she stepped in really and and a group that evidently she works with was very helpful too. But I know there's. There's more people who need help, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just a comment, you know, when I was in school, we had an emergency uh plan, you know, so it sounds like. That's what this could be an emergency plan when needed, you know, the churches, all of our churches will give uh. You know, purchase uh room, space or or whatever is needed, but maybe if we had an outline of these other resources for homeless and the Alvin community. Then we would know what they are, the churches would know what they, the police department would know, so I think tightening the uh the concept of what is really happening. Is going to be, this is a good time to do it.
Mayor Phil Jackson?
Yes, I mean, with everything that I'm hearing, I would like to table that. For the next meeting. Until we have more of these resources come on board.
I don't think we'll have the resources by the next meeting.
Well, next month then.
I think we should.
We need to know who is going to take the head to lead to to get this thing. Run together because.
Well, like I said, we've been dealing with this for years, and I'm sure probably as long as you've also been on council, but. This is, you know, like you said, you run across this all the time, and like, so there have been. Non-stick communications and meetings and. Councilman President?
Um so. We've had a lively discussion on on how what what we can do to help uh those who are unhoused um. And I think that um that's all necessary, and we absolutely should be having these conversations, but the discussion, the thing we're supposed to be approving um. Is at the first step of that conversation, right, so we've talked about the fact that our public safety officers. Are connected to services that can render assistance to the homeless, so us. Codify and creating documents and creating opportunities so that we can educate our both ourselves and our community and our city leaders as to the resources available in Alvin for the homeless. That's that second, that's that happens after we. Approval of this doesn't is not preclude that we're not gonna do that other thing, likewise, us doing that other thing does not preclude that we approve or disprove of this particular ordinance, what this ordinance does is it. Protects our city and our spaces and our business owners and the people who like to use our parks that they will be maintained in a way that is. Helpful to the majority of our citizens. So I don't think a vote for this ordinance is saying somehow that we are against homeless people, we're not willing to help homeless people. All of us here feel strongly that we absolutely have to, it's a prerogative of government to provide resources when necessary to help people less fortunate. But I think we need to get this on the books because it's gotta get two readings, and we do need to protect our business community and our city um. From any potential problems that might occur from people who are unwilling to be helped. So I would call the question.
Yeah.
There was a motion on. But we have to address that motion first, right?
There's a motion to table first.
Can you read? So but there was a, was there a second, was there a support?
Would you repeat the motion, please?
I'm motion to table this until we could get some more information about more resources to back up. Uh our ordinance that we want to place. So I second.
So do we need a timeframe for the table?
We do.
Yes, we do. So thirty days. Thirty days, you said we wouldn't be able to gain anything for the next meeting, so thirty days.
Right, so we have a motion to table for thirty days.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
France?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Stager?
No.
But moving it. You have a motion to approve uh the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four oh six?
Five.
Okay.
So move.
Support.
Five or six?
Oh, five, yeah. For the nuisance parties. Attorney Harkness or?
So, yeah, there is discussing our uh work session, there was. For as long as I've been with the city, there's been issues with kind of these pop up parties that happen in. Abandoned lots or parking lots or at private residences and the spill into the street, so what we did is we took Cal Mizzou's ordinance that they have um that. It was tailored to address these nuisance parties and basically um allows uh. The public safety department to um basically deem them a nuisance if there's the unlawful sale or possession or use of alcohol. Public urination or defecation, unlawful deposit trash or litter, destruction of property, unlawful. Vehicular traffic, so like blocking uh uh traffic, unlawful parking, same thing, unreasonably loud noise. Uh any conduct that injures any person, anything that endangers public safety or property, um any indecent exposure, unlawful sale of uh controlled substances, things like that. Um so that it all be prohibited, um it makes um. A nuisance party misdemeanor. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Harkness? And this for the nuisance?
Yeah.
Um. Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you so much, so how do we um distinguish um what cars are there for? The non-nonsense parties and the. Nonsense parties?
So it's not just, it doesn't just bar cars, it's it's the unlawful. Stopping, standing or parking of vehicles, obstruction of traffic, interfering with emergency services like parking on sidewalks, alleys, so these are all things that would be prohibited. Anyway.
Okay.
So um. If it happens to be a resident that's parked there illegally or in a way that obstructs traffic, they would they would be subject to the same enforcement.
Any other questions? Any quick move up?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
France?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Stager?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four oh six? Uh for the tax exemption for Kennedy Green?
So move.
Support.
Um so both this agenda item and the next agenda item are uh for the Kennedy Green development, uh council recalls, council approved a pilot payment in lieu of tax. Uh for this project um last year, ultimately, the developer did not get their grant funding uh last year, but. They reapplied this year instead of one phase, they're doing two phases, so what we've done. Uh your your first ordinance twenty twenty four oh six is Kennedy Green number one, uh the pilot is for twenty years at the rate of six percent. Um and then the the next, well. Yeah, I'll just tell you, the next agenda item is the exact same thing, except it's Kennedy Green two. Um same time period, same percentage, all of that, um so just so council's clear, what a pilot is, is instead of paying property taxes, the developers paying. A fixed fee based on the um. Rents from collected from the property, six percent of the rents collected from the property uh for a period of twenty years. And the uh ordinances are automatically repealed at the end of the twenty years. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Harkness? Quick move up?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
France?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Stager?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve our next point twenty four oh seven? Uh for the tax exemption for Kennedy Green Phase Two?
So.
So move.
Support.
This is the exact same thing I just went over, anybody have any questions? Oh, okay.
Any quick move up?
Councilmember France?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Stager?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the bar block party application for Salem United Church?
So move.
Support.
Listen to the city manager.
I don't have much on it. I don't have anything on it as far as.
So you have the information in your packet, the application is filed up, signed by appropriate. Partner tags. Any questions? Any quick move up?
Councilmember France?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Stager?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a two large dump in the plow trucks, screen sweeper? And leaf vacuum truck?
So move.
Support.
Chief.
Good evening, Council, uh at this stage in the study session. Corrective is my.
Next.
Next.
Final latest plan.
Not today.
Plan, latest plan. Uh as I said, we got information from both state. Uh the county and some investigation companies can help us uh pick the best trucks for us. We got prices through state bid process and also through uh Sourcewell, how many deal. Uh along with the outfitters, we actually came to our DPW and met with the guys, uh they went over everything, same with the outfitters, uh so. Really, this can be the best look forward, instead of getting one big, large, expensive truck, uh I think it's better to get the the smaller trucks that, you know, what we do. With what the same price. The street sweeper, as I said before, I I stood up here and told her, I think, would you get one? I was wrong. I actually, after watching all in use and seeing. How hard it is to actually get my hands on one to detect it. I think it's by far the most effective way to go forward. Uh in order to keep the city clean. This one is in the picture, like I said, is by far. More superior product that you can try it out. The lead back trailer, so it's a trailer mount unit with a a worker connected by the back of it, uh between. The truck, uh motor itself, using hydraulic arm and be able to suck out whatever they need, then follow behind it and choose it. As I said before, we talked about a couple of these families that have it, almost piles of money, we have. Six or eight of them, and that's where we actually got the idea to follow out the street. Seems to work in that community. Really good, so. So we'll do that here. Uh we did look through, these are these are all through MITO, uh the state bid process or through Sourcewell. Uh. We looked at financing. This purchase, Director Clark and I both looked at uh different agencies that do this for loot value when it started purchases. So you got an interest rate of five point zero five percent for eight years. Uh we pay it off at any time after the first year. So if you choose not to spend any more money on it, pay for it all. Director Clark is getting out the uh the actual spreadsheet for the payments that we receive here. And then spread across several funds, especially the solid waste one.
This is a. Just a summary of. The financing that we're gonna get or that we've been approved for. That's available, it's a really good info, it's only for the top. And it also shows on top. Uh if we keep our money, what I can earn. Some of the money over the eight years. So it makes a lot of sense to enhance this, as you can see, the uh payments are a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars by year. If you pay for over eight years. If we sell it early, once we'll get some money from the sale, you will pay the loan off. I anticipate using. About fifty percent of the payment from the. Uh solid waste fund, which has a lot of revenue. Uh and it's accumulated because a lot of the nuisance is gonna be picking up waste, leaves, dirt and such. Um. So we did get another uh uh proposal that. So we did get another uh uh proposal that was a little bit higher interest rate. Uh same same amount of years, but this is the best one. Uh on top of that, I'm sure that what. We could accumulate over eight years. Uh I I use a five percent uh interest rate. Not to say that we'll get that over the next eight years, but but currently now I'm getting all. Everything that we're invested is given is five or up to six point five percent. And I'm also getting three point eight percent. Uh our checking account money because we sweep it overnight into an interest bearing account. And it comes back in, so we can use it. So it makes a lot of sense to finance this. We'll be able to keep our cash, it's important nowadays, cash is key, it's hard to accumulate. And borrow money, less than what we can invest it for. Makes a lot of sense. Um Chief Campano was on the phone today to finalize the two point nine uh two point nine million bond. From part of the wastewater project. And that is to be an asset two percent. So whenever we can get money to two percent, we have to take advantage of it. We don't want to use our money because we get more. From our investments from. So I just wanted to point that out. They showed you what the interest would be on a total pay here, it would be about two hundred and one thousand. But if we are between four or five percent. I think well, probably close to maybe two seventy five or three hundred and thirty thousand. On the money that we need to use and keep investing.
Councilman.
Yeah, um I think I seen here that we we don't start paying on the plow trucks until we receive them.
That's correct. Once we place the order, it's twelve fourteen months, so we would pay any of this stuff until we.
How are we looking on the street sweeper in the back?
Back, you know, you look in at uh nine days just to get the order, if you, we wouldn't take that that for five months. Then um the street sweeper itself, you're looking at anywhere from uh about ten months or so. Well, same thing, which had maybe eight years until next.
So we're already earmarking that money and we'll be. Getting interest off of that money even before we even perceive those vehicles. That's perfect for that. Question about the plow, will they have a plow underneath those as well or?
A plow underneath, and I also had a hook up to um for that's a little bit more money, about five thousand dollars worth. You only have one truck uh that does that currently. Talking about the road commission and the state. Uh we don't need to have all the trucks, so when we go to different places and go on to the site, oh, we won't get that.
Councilman Davis.
Yes, one of the concerns regarding the patch work, and I know we have a new patch uh equipment. Uh available, how is this going to impact um? Uh eroding roads and a lot of to um citizens are saying sometime they come, you come and put the patch down and then. The plow tears it right up.
Yeah.
So what is that going to, what kind of effect is that going to have?
They have the same effect as the current trucks now. Uh they are absolutely right, it's official, like we throw a patch down, there's a hole, they don't find it and there's a red.
That's right.
That new patch system is. Looking level with the the surface around it. So there's no more scraping up above, it's there. And so these trucks will have the same effect as uh the current trucks we have now. So hopefully, once we start getting it patched or once we do take possession of it, we actually start hitting on there, we're gonna try to lessen it now.
Until we can fix our reviews.
Can you do my speed first?
Mayor Clinton Jackson.
Yes, David. Concerns, that was intense. So I say that the first payment to for this is on July twenty twenty five.
Uh that's what she's got, but that's gonna change when you're not gonna. Actually pay for it, I think for another year. But this is what she'll be able to offer us once we purchase it. So we won't get the money off the front, we won't get it till we actually purchase it.
Okay.
But she's willing to use. Um figures for them.
Okay, now all the other dollars and since that we have been approving for the last couple of weeks. So is there amendment, is there a line so that we can see all of that? Because you know, I don't want that, we're sitting up here, steady saying, yes, it's okay, yes, this is good, and we don't really see that big picture. For twenty twenty five, that's a problem.
Yeah, I think for this next year, we'll do what's called a capital improvement project, which will list a lot of the equipment, because a lot of this stuff will show up. I'm not, I'm gonna accept this ability, uh put that fun, should we set it up and appreciate it over time? But I think next next year, we'll actually include all all the stuff that we've included in the budget, some. Of the items will show up in the expense categories, they'll be capitalized under the balance sheet. But you'll see those will be in the capital projects fund, which will show up with every purchase. And that we intend to purchase next year.
Okay, so can you put that in some area so we can see that, what you're saying today, actually in in that plan?
Yeah, when I do the budget, I'll will I'll make sure that I detail out that I am setting that.
Okay, because I know then also always hear about us taking money and we're putting it in at night, right? And it's making money.
Oh, yeah.
The next day, okay, so. Uh that sounds so, that sounds so good. So we need to see some of that, I said, it sounds so good that we need to see some of that, because there's a lot of money being spent. The investments, yes.
So it is interest.
Okay.
And it's showing every bond that I show when I do the budget.
Okay.
It's a bond I prefer interest.
Okay.
Interest revenue.
That's the word, interest revenue, okay.
And I'll make sure I point that out when I. Go with the budget.
Okay. All right, appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Mary. Um. Being there, we're going with the leasing option this time. We're leasing it to a third party, is that what this is?
Um they're basically calling it a lease, but they're financing. Uh for it, and then once the lease term is over, then we have to notify them.
Okay, will they be servicing the equipment?
Uh yeah, two hundred dollars.
Will they be servicing the equipment? That was my question about, you know, because of the third party?
No.
I saw. All right, no problem.
It's similar to the way we buy.
And it's it's a lease to own for, I don't understand, David could probably explain it better, but you we can't borrow money to buy things, but we can lease things. And so they call it a municipal lease.
Okay.
So it's a little different. We can do bonds, but we can't actually do loans.
Gotcha.
Okay, so it's a lease, not a loan.
Makes sense.
But we still own it at the end.
That's what it is. Understand, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments in regards to this topic? City clerk, Megan.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
France.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. They're motion to approve the application for Vicki Clark.
Some more.
Support. Any questions, candidates? City clerk, Megan.
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the for here for the Reader Park substation?
So moved.
Support.
It's a two turn, I don't know why you sit down.
Okay. This is kind of go over what I put in the council packet, back in the day, the station was contaminated. Uh with the recent flood and everything's going on, we had a catastrophe and we went through three motors. Uh and the pumps that are attached to it. Our crew was able to get, take three, put one together, makes it work right now. Um but it was just barely, we also then found the manholes that were leaking. Uh the river was actually, we have a manhole that's actually in the pond, ran out of time, just taking water, they're great. Uh as I stated, those the guys, to make it stop. Leaking, they took their dog back and a bunny did, put it in a trash bag and shoved it in the hole. And kept it down enough until the water received it, so. Uh. What this is, is part of the repairs, this is what the liner would look like. That would be sprayed inside the manholes. And uh there's a different side, which wanted to take up sixteen thousand pounds per square inch. Before it fails, so basically line it, interior of manholes covers, the manholes themselves, then we put watertight covers on top. That way, it's completely underwater and still not leaking into our system. We had a last set of arrangements, we actually got eight million gallons per day to come in for our treatment. That's only rated at a maximum four minute down today, our normal average day is about two point one, two point two. So we literally had. We could watch the river just run in, just provide the motors, they got three hundred and twenty five degrees, and it was a catastrophic failure. So what we need to do, meeting with our operator in charge, and both the pump company and the contractor that takes care of this sort of stuff for us. The best way to do it is just to start over and actually put in the right pumps, pair of ten horse continuous run motors. The ones that are currently in there are only made to run for a maximum of three hours, and then three half, three hours off, they ran for seventy two hours straight. Um and so. The other thing we're gonna do is the three manholes that are right in line, we're gonna seal them off completely, and then there's about ten along Linden Avenue. That are all, some are underwater and some are. We're going to line those manholes from anywhere from six to eight thousand dollars, manholes. And then seal them off with waterproof, watertight lids, and then that product right there is about five thousand or less, depending on how much product is used. Per man. Right now, we're just gonna do the three that are bad, uh that really lead it. Come back to the plan, the take care of the one by Linden Avenue at another time, we can actually so bad to budget for it. Um. But we'll look at, spend about a hundred and thirty two thousand, I'd say, put in all new valves and all the piping, all the motors, and have it where we could have a torrential flood again. And we don't have to worry about it. You don't have any more infiltration.
Okay, now you're talking about River Park and Reader Park, what are you? Are you planning on doing with the, what was used to be the ice skating park of Reader Park?
Right now, this, that's not really part of this, part of uh.
Yeah, that's what I know.
Um. Really don't have any.
Are you ever gonna turn that back into the ice skating park?
No, I don't know. I know that there were some issues with it because there was some, I believe they dredged it.
Two artesian wells.
And there's two artesian wells that came up, so it doesn't freeze, it's the problem they're having.
Even if they put the those stones back, those. Things back in what they put in.
Yeah, it's down in the inside of the pond itself. So it's not like coming through the side and that it's actually blowing up. Okay, whenever they. Fresh.
No, it's like two thousand and ten. Mark, which was still here when it happened.
Oh, that's right, right.
I know they they, because they did the the thing in honor of Jill McCracken.
Yes.
And and I know I learned how to ice skate in that, on that ring from Jill. Me and his daughter were good friends, and he taught me how to ice skate, and you know, it would be a good thing for a winter time thing for kids, if we could get that back.
Absolutely.
To to working.
Absolutely, I just, I think it's the biggest thing, started each else, now I. I got a question.
I'm sorry, we we don't take.
Oh, yeah.
Um so. And what we're asking. Is to approve the expenditure. Yes, do we have any questions in regard to that, Isaac? City clerk, Megan.
Council member Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
France.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Alright, discussion on the loose, God. Hospital ordinance.
So I I brought this to our council because it's been a concern, not only in just on Ash Street, but in other areas. And so I wanted, could you uh expand on our ordinance?
We we have.
You do, so I guess my question is, what do we do when?
We we cite people a lot for not having their dogs on leashes, but we have to have, I mean, usually it has to be a complaint, somebody has to call for this, know that there's a problem. Generally drive around and see dogs running loose, per se. So. But yeah, we, I I I could double check on that and find out, but I know we write um allow the dog to stray on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yes, we see it in your police reports every week.
Yeah.
At least five seconds every time.
Attorney partners, can you identify what ordinance that is?
There's probably two that apply, there's fourteen dash two, which is uh animals running at large, it says no person shall permit. Any animal owned by him within their charge or possession to run at large. Or in any public place. And then uh there's a separate one specific to dogs that requires dogs to. Uh if they own a dog, it has to have a collar. Um. So. Both of those.
And and Kelly made a good point there.
Fourteen thirty six.
It's in a public place, so on private property, not being on a leash is not necessarily illegal. Until it runs off the private property that it's on.
Like the sidewalk.
Right.
Does that apply to small dogs? You said, you said, you said, you said animals at large, and I'm thinking at small.
It's. Man, oh man. Just to be a gotcha. You know, this includes chickens, Doc. Says no person shall permit any animal or fowl.
Yeah.
Owned by him to run at lunch, you can't have chickens run through the city.
Is there a fee associated with that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Fifty bucks. Man.
Especially the college, you know, she didn't get.
She does free range chickens all the time.
If you you give them a ticket, then it becomes an expensive range chicken.
Like fifty bucks, the first offense.
So you just call.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So you just call public safety for um if you have dogs or cats. Um that's just running stray.
Cats are a little tougher.
Because we have, um it's it's like the same thing, but it's mostly cats for um for precinct day. Mostly people are complaining about, so.
If we, if we know who they belong to, but we can't just, there's no place to take a cat if we pick it up. Yeah, shelter won't take them.
Well, then, if it's in somebody else's. We are, which is.
If if we know who it belongs to, we could cite them for it, but if we don't know who it belongs to, that's kind of difficult.
We don't take them.
We can't, I don't have, I have no place to put them.
I'm sorry, you gotta help me, I gotta.
I know.
I love this.
Isn't there?
Precinct, that was where Union Steel was, I know, and all those sparrows are.
The pharaoh, there's a organization you can call or something.
In terms of almond and apples.
Pharaoh cats. Um she said there's not pharaoh cats, but it's like a neighborhood.
Yeah.
That keeps coming into. Their porch or whatever. Their yard period, so she's asking me what to do.
Yeah.
But again.
That's a difficult one.
Well, nothing or something. I gotta say something. So does that satisfy, I mean, discussion?
It satisfies discussion, first, we do know we have an ordinance, which I knew we had that, but um. With his reports that he says he has out here, um to some of those names up that they got hurt, but the public safety, so if someone makes a complaint. Then you follow through.
Yep.
Okay, so.
If you can identify the dog in the yard, absolutely.
Okay, all right, and then also I know about the shelter, but you still try to take the dogs away as well.
Yeah.
Not the cats.
Right, i- i- if there's a dog, that's a stray dog out there, we will try to catch it, um that's not always feasible either, we've had trouble with that, if we can't get our close enough to it to catch it. Um neither we or Animal Control have tranquilizers that they're used to having in the past, because we can't get the drugs anymore for them, so it's it's next to impossible to catch a dog that doesn't want to be caught.
Okay, all right, um but I thank you for, you know, we thank you for we all having this discussion, and I thank you for answering the questions, but some of these things are imperative to some of our residents because of the fact. If they're not down here to be in these meetings, they actually can go back on YouTube. And they get to hear what you're already saying, so that it helps that information get out. But that one thing, we need to make sure we let all of you guys know that you have got to file a. But that one thing, we need to make sure we let all of you guys know that you have got to file a report, so it has to be, so it can be taken care of. And then it doesn't get taken care of, and then we can come back and say, Kip, um, what's going on, so, okay, I appreciate you, thank you so much.
Next is our discussion on vacant property. And one maintenance and trash.
Yeah, so the, the vacant property verse, and also the, the homeowners, I mean, I thought it was an area. I shouldn't say area, when, when you're off to, when you're in the street. I thought there was a certain side, on each side, that if you could see an abundance of trash, then they would be cited for that. Now, on Erie Street, there's individuals having that problem, and it's right next to them, that's a complaint.
Okay.
Uh, then also over on Ash Street as well, the glass and all that on the sidewalk. And then also going down, uh, I do know for sure. That's still on Eaton Street, correct, yeah, and I'm quite sure they all have. The same problem happening in their areas as well, some things that haven't been taken care of that we continue to bring up, but go ahead.
As you say, like with the glass on the sidewalk, for the code enforcement officer driving around, that's not something easily seen, so. If you could just call and let him know where the problems are at, or let me know where the problems are at, we can definitely direct him to go deal those specifically. Um, I always encourage people to recall and report it, you don't have to necessarily leave your name, just let us know where it's at, so we can take care of it. Um, there's one code enforcement officer, he can't be everywhere all the time, um, and, and a lot of his enforcement is taken. By calls of people complaining, and so he has to deal with that, there's also a lot of paperwork that goes with that, when it comes to grass and trash, there's a time period that. You have to wait before you can actually do something about it, it's getting for people to do it, um, I think it's seven days normally, um, but. Stuff grows still, in that meantime, it, it does take time, um, but I do believe the service, uh, the company we have that is doing the work now is doing a good job and. Um, gets to it in timely manner.
Okay, now four oh one Ash Street, um, they, there, I'm, I'm being told that there is a, a company out of Canada that owns that. And there's a trash buildup.
Okay.
Trash buildup and grass, um, that corner right there, you know, there's children on the other side there, as well. Okay, so that was, the dogs and that was a big concern, I know we can go on and on about people's property, but just long as you know. Something of what's going on.
Yeah.
And see what we can do to help that, and um you do have an ordinance for that, correct, as well?
For that.
For. For the homes and the property in the vacant.
We have the ordinances for both grass and, and trash being accumulated, um, again, I just encourage people to call, you can, you can call a code enforcement officer. And let him know, you can call me, um, and we can pass it on, or you call your city council person, they can pass it on to me, um. But, um, we're more than happy to take the enforcement action that we can take, a lot of times it's just a matter of knowing where those things are at. And one person can't be everywhere and see everything, especially if things are happening in backyards or side yards that aren't always clearly visible from the road.
Okay, there's the key word, visible from the road, so when it is visible from the road, are they being cited?
Um, if they're aware of it, but again, there's fifty-five miles of roads in Albion, and getting on every one of those roads. In between doing all the paperwork that he has to do is not always possible, so.
Okay.
I encourage it, but again, he can't be everywhere all the time, so. If they have concerns, I strongly encourage them just to report it, you don't have to leave your name, just let us know where to go.
Okay.
And also, if you guys are getting complaints from your constituents, I, if I get those complaints, I will. Usually email Jared and Kathy, you know, either Haley or Scott on it. Um, ask if it's been reported, if it's been reported, what's the status, and they will give me the status. Um, so that we can then respond back to the citizens that are, you know, raising the complaints. So that at least they know there's a process, at least they know that, you know, we're working on it. It's not something that can be dealt with all the night, because everybody is, um, you know, they get their due process, so. Definitely let them know and they might, you know, if it's important. Alright, conversation on the children.
So, um, many questions, for one, uh. What is the deadline on that children?
I have very little details on that, I had, I had nothing to do with writing it, so.
Chill grant.
The chill grant.
You're managing that, correct?
Oh.
Yeah.
So I was asking, because it was in, on the children, so there's no. So is the EDC over the children?
No.
Okay, so that's when you asked that, so that's why I'm asking the question. You know, I got people asking.
Colin has been working with their attorney on the agreement, I don't know where you're at with that at that point, but.
The, the agreement is drafted, I mean, the, and the agreement for the third party administrator, if, in terms of timeline, continues through end of January of twenty twenty-six. Um, I don't have the other chill documents with me, but I mean, just looking at the, uh, the third party administrator agreement, that would be between. The city and the EDC, that portion of it, uh, the administration of the grant continues through January of twenty-six. So it is.
So January twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
So you have gave that to the EDC and they're supposed to be working on this?
So I, I drafted the, the third party administrator agreement, because they were the successful bidder to administer the grant.
Okay.
Um, so, that has been drafted and, and uh, I, I believe uh. Lindsay transmitted that to the EDC, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so we can check on that, and so then we also, then they would also know if there was any money. Um, given out to the community as well then, correct?
I don't know that if anything's been given out at this point, so.
Think you have to get the communication in order first.
Right. We do have applications, um, and according to the person from the MEDC, thanks, MEDC.
Is that right?
Yeah, um, we're right on track to where we should be at this point.
Alright, I guess I'll be coming to talk to you. Future agenda items.
Hey, let's go get Eminem over here.
Wishful thinking.
Don't worry, we're ready.
All in favor, say aye. You're wrong.
Yes.
Uh, the mowers.
So don't support.
We're getting a little punchy.
He just showed us about a mill today.
How much money we giving?
I actually thought the guys were. Uh, they called me up, said we got one mower that failed at the water treatment plant, where the engine broke that important. Then I went down inside and turned out, the mower it broke, where it just turned rocks. It's a two thousand. Well, mower, they have to need a new engine to get it running, it worked right today. The other one was two thousand nine, where the pump seal is going out on the drive. It's one that I forfeited from the drug rate back in two thousand and nine. The other one is two thousand and ten, has the spindle that are failing. But we were hoping to bring the downfall of the next five years, to replace these, locate them out, um. But, given the rain and the amount of mowing that they've been doing, it just did. So, uh, I priced out, we went new mowers, bought the plant, it's saving two brand new ones, we buy sixty inch. Give that to the cemetery, the cemetery has two thousand twenty-three and two thousand. You take those mowers, rotate them to raise water, water treatment plant, I'm sorry, uh, the water department. The water treatment plant has a huge set of, uh, huge grass or huge area, we would buy the new seventy-two inch for them. Keep that out there, those mowers should last for quite some time, um, especially with weeds. Uh, and then that way, the cemetery, most every day, uh, we have new mowers. Water treatment plant, we have a brand new seventy-two inch wide area more, and we can take these, sell them off, try to get as much.
Any questions for Deputy Chief Curtis?
Good day.
So, total cost, it's gonna be about, well, six thousand dollars for three mowers, two will go to the cemetery, and one will go to the water. The water department, uh, he expects to get between ten, twelve thousand for the old ones. So that costs would be about thirty-seven thousand. I, I wouldn't, I see he's going to shoot for three years, they're gonna rotate them out. Uh, I'm hoping that's a solid waste fund, it'll help with some of the costs, but we just don't have the cash.
Any questions for Director Fonsen?
Which do goats come?
Also member Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Franch.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
And Mary Snyder.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the expenditure for the free dump drive repair?
So move, support.
This is part of the last week. Issues. So there's three abandoned wellhouse, the way back to the tree. Blue building, they sit off and swap. They used to, they got lines to come out of them, and they're about ten, sixteen inches in diameter. They are spraying water all through the town, um, because they're still connected to our water system. So, any fish or any animals that are getting fluoride treatments. And we're thinking it's roughly spraying about five gallons a minute to. Out to about a million gallons of here, going to the spawn, between the three dump and uh. Water department, furthermore, there's a pipe to go under the gravel driveway going back to the tree dump that is broken. It's part of these wellhouses, and if you drive back there right now, you'll see on the left-hand side, your first one. We try to throw as much dirt as we can in there, because it keeps sinking down, from all the contractors working on the. Uh, remodel, rebuild of the waste garbage, so you have the brine lowers, dump trucks, everything both another. And it's constantly, the road keeps sinking, sinking, sinking on the left side, we continue down, we get to the right side. A little bit further for the second wellhouse, and starting to test and think. And, uh, in order to fix it correctly, there is a sixteen inch main that goes from across Alvin Street. All under those ones, to these wellhouses, down Brownsville, and it's full of pressure. Our guys cannot handle sixteen inch watering, flowing full water, because if we break that open. Being told that that water tower will drain out, they can come right out through there. So, there's a company I grant, that a lot of municipalities use, that's, this is what they do, they're called city services. Their estimate, they said, yeah, we come down and we'll cap that line off, we'll put a valve on it for you in case there's any type of future development. But it's gonna be about twenty grand, and I was like, oh.
That's a bargain.
Yeah.
We just dropped eight hundred and fifty bucks, we do a hundred and fifty thousand on you, this is not.
So, uh, this is the best way to fix it, it's gonna continue to spray, it's been spraying for quite a while, my understanding. Uh, but now that the pipe is broken underneath the road, now we're starting to.
Yeah, thank you, do we know if it's been spraying for over a year? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Also member Davis.
Yes.
Franch.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mary Snyder.
Yes.
Now, future agenda.
Move, we have no agenda items next meeting. If we have no agenda items next meeting.
Uh, yes, uh, we've requested, I, I let, um, uh. Clerk Domingo know to how, uh, to schedule, um. Presentation with the Transportation Board of County, so, uh. We will present a, a PowerPoint and bring Albion up to date in terms of the proposal, which will be, um. Added to the November ballot.
Any other items?
Thank you so much, um, do we have a, uh, it might could be answer right now, a, update for the signs for autistic children? Are we still waiting?
Elmer has those, and he was supposed to get with you about where to put them.
Okay, thanks. Can we get a, uh, for next meeting, can we get an update on how many positions are not filled? And, uh, what's being done to get them, you know?
Positions throughout? Or specific department?
By department, yeah.
I can give that to you right now, if you'd like. I said I can give it to you right now, if you'd like, as far as I know, there's only two positions that are in the city.
Okay, it's Ian's and.
Ian's, and then I have one public safety officer position open.
And what?
One public safety officer position that's open. Oh, yes, and there's one accounting clerk, and then Jason's raising his hand for one too, so. So there's one accounting clerk, one public services, one public safety, and the planning director.
HR.
That's, we don't have a position posted for that right now.
We don't have one.
Not for HR.
Were you just asking vacant or posted?
Okay, vacant.
Those are the vacant position.
Okay.
Yes.
Can we get that on, on next month's, on the next meetings, this?
Do you want a discussion item, or do you want me to just email it out to you, so you have it?
Email it out to me.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and, what, when we were doing to get them building? Something.
Yeah, they've, they've all been posted, Ian's position was posted for over a month, and we had no applications for it, we have just recently reposted it. We were in discussions with a company to contract that work out, and that company told us that they are no longer interested in doing that, so. We are kind of back to square one.
Okay. Is the M M L doing anything about helping with that?
We, we posted it on their site, and, and are trying, um, the planning company that we talked to, um, said specifically that. Um, they are having the same problems everyone is, is finding people in the planning business, and it's very difficult to find employees that are interested in that.
Wow.
So. So I'm learning all I can about it right now.
Okay, one other thing, uh, that I was, uh. I was, when I went out to the workers, uh, to the, to the big park. When we had a workers' meeting, they were, they were saying thank you to the council for. Providing for them the things that they needed to do their job, and I thought that was really, really neat too, because they were very serious about that. And, uh, they're saying, you know, that we're beginning to get them the things that they need to help to do their jobs better. And so I told them, I said, well, I'll say that, because I, when I was out there, I said, one of the guys, somebody had broke up charcoal all over the. The floor of the pavilion, I said, you think you can get this cleaned up for me, swept up for me, because usually they go and find a broom. And he said, oh yeah, he walked over the truck and he pulled out his thing and he came over, he just said a few minutes had that whole place all cleaned up. And so, you know, I, I think that, uh, I've been on council a long time. And, and I, I've been through a whole lot and seen a whole lot that they had to go through, and now things are getting much, much better for me, so I'm glad. About that, because it, it makes. Uh, it easier on them, since they have the things to work with, and, and, and I think that's really, really good, and, uh. I guess that's it.
Any other future agenda items? Public comments, if there's anybody in the Hillary that would like to stand in the first council. Maybe use of this time, if you're in the interest.
Here for the fair event, um, Scott Avery, uh, two four one seven seven, grabs out homework. Uh, I just want to say thank you for giving the time to, uh, look into the category. And into the permission problem of almost this, uh, notness in this city, or even this county, but. Um, anything we can do, anything that can be done, should be done, and I commend you for at least taking the time to. Look at that issue, so, thank you.
So, uh, I have a lot of good companies, uh, just wanted to thank you all for, uh, approving the first reading of the. Uh, highly recommended one, two. We're really excited about, um, focusing on opportunities and. Uh, feel good about our chances of getting those, uh, both awarded this year. Uh, then I also wanted to talk about, you know, there's a lot of discussion about addressing homelessness within, uh, the city. Uh, what are the companies within our portfolio? We have about forty permanent supportive housing developments that. Address, uh, individuals with, uh, facing chronic homelessness. Uh, and a large portion of that portfolio is actually here in Michigan. Just within the last year. We had a project that finished construction, those permanent supportive housing project in Mount Clemens. Um, another one that started construction in Grand Rapids. And two more that received funding in Wyoming and Traverse City. So we have, uh, a lot of experience in the permanent supportive housing, um, world and. Uh, would be open to a discussion, uh, with the city about, uh, maybe working on a. Project or permanent supportive housing here in Albion. Uh, it's a little too late in game to transition either of these two projects to permanent supportive housing, but we definitely go through that conversation. Uh. And even on these two projects, we have, uh, agreements set up with. Uh, Huntington Bank to provide financial literacy services for our residents. Uh, we've agreed with Alvin Housing Commission, uh, to provide homeownership classes for, uh. The, our residents, uh, we have agreed at Summit Point to provide behavior health services. Um, Grace Health, we have partnership with them to provide, uh, physical health services. I believe each of those are at an hour set up to be offered on a monthly basis. Um, so that just goes to show we have a lot of experience working with those different service providers and continuing care. Um, in the different counties that we've worked in, so, um, just a little food for thought, um, on. You know, some future discussions. Thank you.
Uh, hi, Virgie Ammerman, three oh five East Main Street, Homer, Michigan. Thank you for letting me come up during public comment and. Express my appreciation for the council's approval of Vicky Clark back on the EDC board. Um. I know it's, we are having a hard time finding people and I really appreciate that Vicky was willing to stay on and and take a renewal. And I really appreciate all of you, um, supporting that. So thank you so much for that. Um, I wanted to also thank you for the robust conversation around the homeless problem. Um, so and, or I'm sorry, the new word is unhoused, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to move to that new term. Um, we have had conversations at the EDC office and we're beginning to be a bit of a pivot. Uh, for that, and so we'd like to extend that offer if. Um, it would help, we could bring some more updates as to the work that we're doing and some of the partnerships that we've created. So several people have come in and we are getting some some traction. We've actually created a ten hour a week housing coordinator position that we're, I haven't. It hasn't gone to the EDC board yet, but we're beginning to formulate that role. And that person would be responsible to be the pivot point. Because we do get a lot of things going and then we, then there just isn't the next person to. Put the next plan together. And so when you're thinking about these continuum of services and different style of housing. Um, and like Pat said, even if when you build that permanent supportive housing, which you can help somebody get into, but. The reason that supportive housing is so critical is it helps them stay housed. And so sometimes keeping someone housed is as important, if not more important, than even getting them there in the first place. So learn, having people who have been having a hard time staying housed is really important. Um, so I just wanted to make you aware of that and thank you for the conversation and if I can bring any information to you, I will. Um, on the chill grant, we do have the contract. Um, we ran into a snafu because apparently. Uh, the EDC may not be insurable under the city's policies and that is a requirement of the chill grant. So I've, I'm, we're trying to work through all the difficulties with that. Um, we, I believe we're insured now, but I don't want to, you know, fill out the contract and then we're not insurable. So something has gone goofy there, so, um, we are trying to work that out. Their first draw has to be made by November. So there are incremental due dates that I am getting a little bit nervous about, so I am trying to. Push the envelope on that, but thank you for asking and we do want to get those monies out into the community. So thank you.
Good evening, Council. Alex Harris, one twenty seven North Superior Street. Uh, big election tomorrow. If you haven't voted already, remind your constituents to please get out and vote and express their opinion. Um, but personally, uh, people ask me, why would I run for state representative and and why, you know? Is this something that I want to take on? And it's because I care. I care about Albion. Um, I went to school here. I wasn't smart enough to take Orgo, but, uh, I played football and I love the place and moved away for work and found my way back here in twenty nineteen. I've been here ever since. I decided to invest and build my business here, my livelihood. I live here and work here, play here as much as I can. Uh, swinging at the show last night was great. And I want this place to prosper and I'm the only state rep that really is an Albionite and, uh. Want to take your voice and your concerns to Lansing and do the best we can for this district, especially Albion. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other like to stand in the rest council? Uh, city manager's report?
Uh, just a couple of things that, just a reminder to everyone, has already been told that we have an election tomorrow, so get up and vote. And, uh, National Night Out with Albion Public Safety was scheduled for tomorrow night, Tuesday, and we have now moved that to Wednesday. Due to the possibility of storms tomorrow evening, so it will be Wednesday from six to eight at, um, Macintosh Park by the splash bed.
You have a flyer?
Uh, I did post it on Facebook today, but, but I don't have a flyer specifically for it. I can get you something though.
If you email it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. He emailed us a just a reminder, a change of date.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Was it the flyer in the email too?
No, I don't think it was an email. No, yeah, because all I had was a Facebook post.
Okay. Council members.
Well, still getting rave reviews about, um, the park system. Um, she's all really. Really, um, thankful for the workers in the park system, so. Please share that with them, let them know that they're doing a great job if you guys would, thank you.
I kind of echo that, um, there was a great block party that happened at Macintosh Park on Saturday to honor Larry Williams. Um, it was, you know, whenever I go by Macintosh, it's always kids, especially with the heat that we've had this summer. There's so, so many kids playing in the water park. So it's so cool to see that the parks are being utilized and, you know, whenever I go by, uh, any other park. Even, you know, the banner pavilion, that just, all of the spaces are being utilized, which is exactly what we want to see. And like, you know, Councilman Williams said, you know, I hear feedback that people are appreciative that the parks are being mowed and. You know, letters being picked up, so we do appreciate all the hard work that our men are doing in regards to keeping the city look good. Um, so I didn't have the, um. Proclamation put on this agenda because we did so many updates and they didn't want to do that digital again. But I will have Larry Williams proclamation on the next agenda, um, to read to him as well. But also, like somebody said, swing with the show, pass to Sunday, it's been perfect weather. I've seen pictures of greater tendence. So it's it's just a huge event that everybody should have an opportunity to get out and listen to the great music. Any other council members? You have a motion, Nigel?
So move.
Support.
Like, let us say aye.
All right.
Close, meeting adjourned nine oh four P M. Thank you all.